And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, if you'd begin the agenda, please.
Copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, copy of all material to be discussed at today's meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. Material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item 1 are minutes, approval of minutes, to the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, November 4, 2014.
Move approval? Second. Okay. Any comments or corrections? Call the roll, please.
Shore.
Yes.
Raybold.
Abstain.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries two yes, one abstention. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through Tuesday, November 18, 2014.
Move approval of the claims?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is number three, public hearing, County Text Amendment Number 14012 to amend Lancaster County zoning resolution to Article 13-1 on excavation and stone milling.
All right. We will open the public hearing on this item, and if you're interested in testifying, please move to the front.
Do you sound like a swearer for the testimony you're about to give? Is it truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning. Sarah Hartzell of Planning Department. I have a text amendment for you today that's relatively minor. A little history on soil mining in the county. Prior to 1979, when we did the complete overhaul of the zoning resolution in the county, mining and processing of anything that was mined on that site wasn't allowed use. There was no special permit requirement. It was just part of general business out in the county. When '79 zoning resolution was approved, it approved soil mining as a permitted, special permitted use. So then you had to get a special permit. Now, our policy with special permits is if you were conducting that particular use prior to the requirement of a special permit, prior to a change that required that special permit, then you are given what's called a pre-existing special permit. So you were a legal pre-existing use. You automatically get a special permit, and there's not even any process to go through to get it. You just go to the building and safety department, show that you have been conducting this use since the time that the resolution was changed, and they give you a number. That's the entire process.
Great.
Well, in 2009, this was particularly an issue in the city.
I never announced that.
2009, there was, there were starting to be some problems with soil mines. There were a lot of soil mines going on because of the I-80 widening project. A lot of soil was needed to grade the bed out, level everything, and make a wider bed for the interstate. People were, especially up north of Lincoln, were having some trouble with the amount of trucks, the dust that was being produced, the runoff, mud on the streets, and things like that. And they were very concerned and came to the county and to the city and said, you know, "We've got some real concerns with these soil mines." There was a task force that was put together, and they came up with some new rules. So in 2009, we had a big change in how soil mines were regulated in the city and the county with these new rules. In that change, we also changed the name of soil mines. So instead of calling them soil mines, or mines, or rock crushers, or quarries, which were all used in the city and the county, and it was very confusing to figure out what was what and where certain things were allowed, it was all put together into one group, which was called excavation and stone milling. I'm not quite sure why they picked those two words, excavation and stone milling, out of the many words that they were using, but those are the words that were picked. Unfortunately, there was no explanation of what stone milling meant. There's no definition in our definition section. There wasn't in the city's. And as a matter of fact, it's a little hard to even nail down a good definition of stone milling when you go online and look at Webster's Dictionary and look at some of the industrial documents and that sort of thing. The best we could do is that milling is the processing, crushing, or cutting of materials. If you're stone milling, then it's the processing, crushing, or processing of stone. So we're suggesting that a addition of a definition to, of stone milling be added to the text. And if I can find the definition here. "Stone milling shall include crushing, cutting, grinding, or otherwise processing of minerals when associated with an excavation operation." That's one suggestion that we're making. The other suggestion is that we strike "and" stone milling from the name of the special permit. Just call it excavation. And then the third is really more applicable to the city code. In the city, for those pre-existing special permits, I mean, our code for soil mining is rather lengthy. Two and a half pages of our special permit chapter is rules for excavation special permit. That's probably three to four times as many rules as most of the other special permits have. So there are a lot of different requirements for these excavation special permits. In the city, the last line in that special permit said that the city council could make changes to these. The county board had the foresight to allow the planning commission to do that because planning, or because special permits are final action. At Planning Commission, it allows all that to be done in one place instead of that applicant then having to go on to the county board to get any kind of amendments made to that. And so for these special, or these pre-existing special permits, the county already had the ability to make any adjustments at Planning Commission. We are adding a special line in there that was actually more to help the city side of it, but I don't think it really does anything special with the county here. It's just not all of the conditions will apply to pre-existing, long-term excavation sites. This all came about because we have two in the county that I know of, and there may be others out there. Mines, you might call them, or quarries. Schwart Quarry, which is actually in the city jurisdiction, down on South 54th and Witstruck Road. And then there's a sand mine that is, or sand borrow pit, I guess you could call it, that is down on West Panama Road, kind of over towards the Sheldon Station facility. That sand was used during the construction and during the decommissioning of that facility, which once upon a time was a nuclear facility. And that sand mine is still actively being used. So we have a couple of these very long-term, like from the 1950s, and Schwart may even go back to the 1920s quarry sites.
Even older.
You think even earlier than that. Very possible. I know that it is now the indoor play center, but there used to be the Check Ager Indoor Zoo over by our children's zoo. That's built from stone, from the Schwart Quarry, for sure. So those are the changes that we're suggesting to the text, and I will be happy to answer any questions if you have some.
Questions for Sarah? I want to thank Commissioner Shore for opening the meeting, and Brent and I give you our apologies. We were in a meeting with the mayor, and it went a little bit long, so thanks for going ahead. Are there others which wish to testify at the public hearing?
Do you sound like a swearer for the testimony you're about to give? Is it truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Danae Calcaski. I'm appearing this morning on behalf of Gena Trucking and Excavating. Gena is the one who has the pre-existing sites, and so we just want to come up in support of the text amendment. We appreciate the county and the city working with us on clarifying the language and giving us a definition that should help us utilize this special permit provision a little bit better in the future. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but we support the changes.
Any questions? Well, we thank you for the responsible attitude to help formulate the rules and regulations that the trucking industry, as well as the mining industry, can live with.
Thank you.
Are there others which wish to speak on this? Did the county engineer have anything they'd like to say?
Do you sound like a swearer for the testimony you're about to give? Is it truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I was just having a quick sidebar with Sarah, the planner, because, you know, people forget that I have a rock quarry. And sometimes at county engineering, and, you know, sometimes we forget too, because we haven't used it since the 70s. But we'll need to see how this text amendment affects our rock quarry. So.
I think most, a lot of the original county houses, the house maintainers, I know the one at Waverly and Cottington, and several of those are made out of that stone, which was quarried out of that quarry.
Correct, Commissioner Hudson. In fact, we mined a lot of that during the WPA days to build those buildings. So it is a, you know, it's a significant quarry.
Thank you. Anyone else which wishes to speak for, against, or in a neutral position on the resolution in the matter of County Text Amendment 14012? Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read accompanying attachment A, please.
This is under New Business, a resolution in the matter of County Text Amendment Number 14012. A text amendment to the Lancaster County zoning resolution amending Article 13, Section 13-1, subsection 14, excavation and stone milling amendments are provided in attachment A.
Move approval?
Second.
Then move and seconded. Further discussion? I'll be called the roll, please.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4B is a resolution in matter of rescinding County Resolution Number ARTH-1-31, authorizing installation of a fence and gate on Sunny Slope Lane in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a resolution in matter of county maintenance of roads within Parkland Estates Edition, generally located at northwest 118th Street and West Fletcher Avenue.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4D is an amusement license amendment from JK's Pumpkin Patch to extend operation dates to include December 6 through the 7, the 13 through the 14, and the 20th and 21st from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Morning.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your plans here?
I'm kind of speechless, actually. No. Good morning. Yes, as you can see, we are requesting an extended of dates for December 6, 7, 13, 14, 20, and 21 from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We've had a significant season this year with the fall pumpkin season and the acturism on the farm. And we've had a lot of requests from the public doing something, as you would say, in the wintertime for the farm with, our theme that we're going with is winter fun farm. Still going to open it up to all the agricultural activities on the farm, do a lot more of the field trips, and we got big groups that are wanting to come out on the weekends that are basically wanting to learn about the different things we have on the farm. We're getting into calving season. We're getting into hatchery with our chickens and different things like that. So more of a hands-on educational piece. And then we're going to put a twist on it, too, to add a little more of the fun Christmas-themed things, too, with the winter wonderland, with doing Santa and maybe doing some sleigh rides and different things like that with the animals on the farm. So just basically adding something else out there to make it more appealing to the families, and the families that are really enjoying themselves and learning a lot from what we have out there.
Okay. Questions? If you'd have for Josh?
I'm remembering back to the email. You've got a partner. You're doing a fundraising event. Am I remembering that correctly?
We have been doing quite a few fundraising events, yes. Mainly, we've been supporting FFA and 4H, but also we're doing stuff with Toys for Tots, different things like that for Christmas. And this is another thing that we're going to do in addition to that. And then obviously, our big one is breast cancer awareness. So I've had some health struggles this year with myself as well. So we're trying to, we did the pink pumpkins this year, which went over significantly well, and all those proceeds went back to breast cancer awareness and research, too. So.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Good question, Mr. Shore.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
E is a recommendation from purchasing and county corrections to issue a purchase order to Reich's Equipment Company for one Yale stand-up control lift truck with a backup alarm at a cost of $21,248.
Move approval? Second.
Discussion. Director Mike Thiver says this is for those hard-to-reach places. Okay. Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a recommendation from purchasing and county engineer to issue a purchase order to NMC, Inc., for one 420F ST backhoe loader off the NJPA contract 060311-CAT. Estimated cost of the purchase is $101,643.67.
This particular machine is being bought off of a state bid system, so the number is already out there. I did want to draw to your attention that it is about $5,000 over our budgeted amount. But for that amount, we are getting a machine that is four-wheel drive, front-wheel assist. So if you're someone who scoops with this equipment, you know how valuable that is. And in addition to that, it has a pneumatic thumb. And so, Commissioner Shore, you might say, "What is county engineer Dingman talking about, pneumatic thumb?" So, you know, these machines, they, for lack of a better term, they kind of have grabbers. And typically, the thumb has been something that's manually controlled when they go to grab something, like a tree. In this case, this one will be automatic, so it will be much easier for our employees to use it. And so we will make adjustments other places in our budget so that we can purchase this piece of equipment.
Commissioner Raybold?
Pam, are you trading in any old piece of equipment? Or is there an old?
In this case, in this case, there is not a trade-in. We did, Commissioner Raybold had an auction a couple of weeks ago, and we did auction off some of our older pieces of equipment again. And what we will do is we will continue to look at the trade-in cost versus what we think we could get at auction, so that we take the option that is the best, the most cost-efficient for county engineering.
Any further questions? We have a motion, please.
Second.
Further discussion? Call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is amendment to County Contract C-14-453 with Dr. Feelgood for fuel maintenance and service on an as-needed basis. Amendment increases the maximum expenditures of the county to $18,100 during the term of the contract. Move approval?
Second.
And I guess I have a question. Have we had this service in the past? And I know we have to keep this diesel fuel in condition, or it doesn't run on these cold days.
So brought you some pictures today, commissioners. Okay. So we have had this service in the past. This is a new contractor this year, and when we went to look at our fuel tanks, we had a lot of issues with our fuel tanks. And who knew that algae plume can grow in diesel? Because there is a percent, Larry knew. Of course you did, Larry.
I didn't.
Because there's a percentage of biodiesel in it. This is obviously something that is very, very tough on our equipment. So when we discovered this, and this is from one of the tanks, this is actually another picture of looking at the algae plume in the diesel. And we kind of have the before and after sample. So we, this is, the reason the contract is increasing is because we've had to shock treat all of our tanks. All the filters have had to be replaced on all the pumps. And then in addition to that, a few of the machines did have to have their filters, their fuel filters replaced. This is very bad to be in our machines and very costly. We will also be shock treating several of the motor grader tanks themselves and the diesel equipment to make sure that all of this is killed from our systems in order to maintain our equipment better.
Is there a chance it will grow back? Or if we shock it and kill it, it's gone for good?
Well, what, this contract is, so we're going to shock it and kill it, but we're going to have to continue to maintain it. And so it goes back to that, you know, we need to look at our fuel on a regular basis. In addition to that, I have spoke with the city purchasing agent, and we will be testing our diesel as it comes in, just to make sure that we're getting good diesel and good fuel from the start. But shocking and killing will help, and then general maintenance after that.
Yeah, and I do have a question. When it comes to the shocking, what is the cost? What's the procedure?
It's actually an additive that we put in the tank, and it kind of, it digests that algae.
Kills the algae.
And so, and then it can be vacuumed out of the bottom of the tank.
Okay, okay. What's the cost on that?
Well, the total cost for shocking all the tanks, that's the reason for the increase, the $18,100. If you want an individual cost per tank, it kind of depends on the different type of tanks.
Okay.
But I can, I can get that for you, Commissioner.
It depends.
An engineer, we do like details.
I know.
It depends on the gallonage. You're actually treating the gallons that are in there at the time. So it's, it's not just the capacity of the tank, it's the gallons that are in there.
See, I just learn so much at these meetings.
Well, the quality of diesel fuel is, really varies, and, you know, comes through pipelines, and it's mixed, and it's not segregated as closely as you would think so. So it's been necessary. And of course, these Tier III and Tier IV engines are pretty particular on what they burn, too. So it's.
We do have some tanks where on occasion, we do get a little water.
Condensation.
On the surface of the diesel. And who knew, bugs can live on top of that water, and bug, bugs, and their fecal contamination precipitates in that diesel, and then helps this algae bloom grow, too. And so, again, it's a, it's a regular maintenance thing that we just need to take care of so that we don't get to this point. I'm hoping that next year's, next year's contract amount to Dr. Feelgood, once we get these under control, will be a lot, a lot more cost-effective.
I can tell you from experience, it's a lot better to treat the diesel fuel than to replace injection pumps.
I can tell you that, too.
Move approval?
Second.
And I believe we have a motion and a second on this. Any further discussion? So call the roll, please.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is a memorandum of understanding with Julia Dickman-Andrus Memorial, Inc., for consultation and training services for the Nebraska Community Aid and Juvenile Justice Conference.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4I is an interlocal agreement with the city of Lincoln to create a joint city-county information services division.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion.
Like the opportunity for Steve to just speak. Steve, did you want to come up and say something? Because it makes it sound like it's a new agreement, and really, it's just a revision or expansion, whatever you're.
We took something good and even made it better. Steve, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Shore is absolutely right. This is a revision to the existing interlocal. This is the document that I have informally briefed the board on within the last couple of months. No further changes since those briefings. The city council earlier this month approved this same document on a vote of seven to zero. Would graciously hope you would vote in a similar fashion. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Raybold?
Well, I just wanted to add, the last time that the interlocal was reviewed and worked on was 1999. So.
Long time ago, yes.
It was a good agreement, and it represents one of the joint agencies that the city and the county have. And I think it's been truly very successful.
And I think this is somewhere between 30 and 40 interlocal agreements that we do with the city of Lincoln. So instead of having separate departments each, we both use the same department, but operate it through interlocal agreements. And it's been a great model for city-county cooperation. We appreciate the time reviewing it, and your staff, and the good service that they bring to both entities.
And thank you to everyone for their participation, particularly Commissioner Raybold for her work with the ISBC in getting this revision accomplished.
Thank you. Any further questions? We have a motion, Mr. Clark?
Yes, we do.
Why don't you proceed with the vote, then?
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudson? Motion carries five to zero. J is an agreement with the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln for evaluation of the Lancaster County Adult Drug Court Expansion Grant and motivational interviewing and training sessions. The county shall expand federal grant funds in an amount not to exceed $216,240 for the services provided. Term of agreement is October 1, 2014, through September 30, 2017. Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a grant contract with Houses of Hope, Nebraska, Inc., in the amount of $40,000 to provide funding for the halfway house program. Term of the contract is July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015.
Move approval? Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is labor agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 32 for a two-year period beginning August 21, 2014.
Move approval? Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4M is a revised job description for the Lancaster County Human Services Administrator.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. Like to thank Commissioner Shore for the extra work that she put in on this, and that's one of the reasons Brent and I were a little bit late getting down here. The mayor wanted to discuss it and know the details and was generally supportive.
I believe that the application has been, or the, you know, the application process is now posted online, and hope you have a lot of strong applicants, as I know we will.
And Kit's going to be hard to replace, but she has told us that she wants to retire, so we're going to try to find a new human services director. Call the roll, please.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is setting the salary of Sarah Saffarick, Deputy Public Defender, in an amount of $58,834.88 per year effective December 1, 2014. Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4O is setting the salary of Brittany Lewitt, Deputy Public Defender, in an amount of $58,834.88 per year effective December 23, 2014. Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is a compliance amendment to the Lancaster County 401A Retirement Plan. The amendment modifies the definition of spouse to include same-sex spouses who are legally married under the laws of the state in which the marriage was celebrated, only for those planned purposes subject to federal rather than state law. The amendment also designates the state of domicile rule during the transitional period from June 26, 2013, through September 15, 2013.
Move approval? Second.
Discussion.
I just have a few comments on this. I do applaud the Lancaster County's efforts to move forward to be in compliance with federal laws on our retirement plan. It is the law, and it is the right thing to do. It is interesting and surprising to note that Nebraska was the very first state in the United States to file a federal lawsuit recognizing the unfairness of the state's ban on same-sex marriages back in 2003. And in 2006, the Eighth Circuit Court upheld the state of Nebraska's ban. Since that time, all 50 states in the United States have filed lawsuits challenging the ban against same-sex[1712.88] ban against same-sex marriages. And now, as of yesterday, on behalf of seven families, Nebraska was officially the last state in the United States to file another federal lawsuit challenging the state's ban. The legal landscape has clearly and dramatically changed since 2006, and especially since the U.S. Supreme Court in 2013 declared parts of DOMA, the Defense of Marriage Act, unconstitutional. Since then, more than 33 states, including the District of Columbia, City of St. Louis, and Missouri, recognize same-sex marriages performed elsewhere. Over the last eight years, the list of public sector and private sector Nebraska entities that provide benefits to same-sex legally married couples are vast and growing despite our state's constitutional ban. And here are just a few of the respected and largest employers in our state that have already recognized the importance of attracting the most talented, the best and brightest to work in our state. Conagra, Union Pacific, First National Bank, Mutual of Omaha, Woodman of the World, Creighton University, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield, just to name a few of the companies throughout our state of Nebraska. And on the public sector side, we have the City of Omaha, the City of Lincoln, Omaha Public Schools, Elkhorn Public Schools, Lincoln Public Schools, and the University of Nebraska with their Plus One Plan. And in fact, it has been one of the Nebraska Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, priority to retain and attract a workforce for our state's future. So, it looks like Lancaster County will be the last public sector institution that offers health benefits to same-sex legally married couples. We have a long way to go, and hopefully, the U.S. Supreme Court will provide the legal clarity to help us get there.
Are there other comments or discussion? If not, will you call the roll, please?
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4Q is adoption. This is from the Lancaster County Pension Review Committee regarding the investment array for the 401A Lancaster County Employment Retirement Plan and the 457B Deferred Compensation Program, which includes immediately initiated search for new mid-cap value fund while continuing to monitor the mid-cap value systematic and Perkins Value T-Funds through the end of 2014. If the two existing mid-cap value funds are eliminated, the proceeds should be mapped to the new mid-cap value fund selected as a result of the search process. Seven basis points of the savings in the renegotiation of the prudential contract should be used to increase the return on the Gibraltar Guaranteed Fund by reducing the cost of the fund by 14 basis points, and two basis points of revenue should be placed annually into the 401A and 457B expense accounts. Eliminate the Royce Pennsylvania Mutual Fund and map the proceeds to Vanguard Small Cap Index Signal Fund, and the Core Plus Bond Pimco Fund should be eliminated, and proceeds should be mapped to a new core bond fund with higher-quality assets and less risks.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? The board has a fiduciary responsibility to review these investment options and make sure that they're working for our employees, and we want to thank Doug Serra, the County Attorney's Office, and Carrie Egan from our office particularly for all the work that they have done in this regard on our behalf. Any further comments? If not, will you call the roll, please?
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is a grant contract with families inspiring families to provide funding for $10,865 for parent support groups at the youth services center. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. S is a grant contract with volunteer partners to provide funding in the amount of $11,707 for the community service project. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Gold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4T is a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster County Corrections by Lawrence Harris for $8.89.
Based on the recommendation of the Director of Corrections, I move we deny.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. U is a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster County Corrections by Lawrence Harris for $3,500.
Based on the recommendation of the Director of Corrections, I move we deny.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. V is a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster County Corrections by Bryant Williams for $47.58.
Based on the recommendation of the Director of Corrections, I move we deny.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. W is a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster County Corrections by Cody Sharp in an undisclosed amount.
Based on the recommendation of the Director of Corrections, I move we deny.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. X is executive session for labor negotiations.
I would suggest that we hold this and recess this meeting and take it up after the Board of Equalization. So, will you proceed, Mr. Clerk?
Next is number five, consent items, right-of-way contracts with the following. City Bank and Trust accrete South 54th Street and Hickman Road for $505. Omar and Maxine Jenson, South 60th Street and Rebel Drive for $150. William and Cheryl Wright, South 60th Street and Rebel Drive for $1,000. Receive and place on file the following reports for October 2014. County Clerk, Clerk of the District Court, County Assessor Registered Deeds, County Records and Information Management. Setting of a public hearing on Tuesday, November 25th, 2014 at 10:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding comprehensive plan amendment 14005-14007 watershed master plan.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
Call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none and gender may do so at this time.
Anybody wish to make public comment? Seeing none, oh, go ahead.
I'm venturing to guess, oh, come forward, sir. I just wanted to recognize, I'm assuming we have a number of students here in the audience, as we usually see about this time of year for class purpose reasons. There's more information about today's agenda on our website, on the County Clerk's website, as well as our contact information, and I know we would all be happy to answer any questions you might have about today's meeting.
And thank you for being here. Go ahead. Take your name for the record, please.
Rick, Rick DeBoer. Ask me 2468, union president.
Welcome, Rick.
Thank you. I realize that we are in current negotiations, and so I will not be talking about that. However, there are some issues that I do believe that the board needs to be aware of. But I, I don't want to share those right now because of public comments and, and trying to keep this within the ranks as much as possible. I've, I've asked to be put on the agenda at staff meetings, and twice I was denied. And I understand the reasoning behind it. However, as a representative of the employees, there are some things that I would like to bring to the board's attention, and I didn't know if it was possible to do that in executive session or not. I know that Engineer Dingman has been real good about working with us, resolving a lot of the things that we've got going on there. We appreciate the open-door policy offered, offered by Engineer Dingman, but there are some things that are not in her control that would be in the board's control. So, that would be a request I have for the board's consideration. Thank you.
You. Any questions? Is there anyone else which would like to make public comment? Will we continue with announcements?
Number seven of our announcements, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, November 20th, 2014 at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, November 25th, 2014 at 10:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesday and Saturday on Five City TV, Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV Video On Demand or Five City TV on YouTube.
Well, ready to see us, the Regard County Board meeting, and open the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, November 18th. Would you proceed, Mr. Clerk?
The Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also in attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the County Assessor's Office. Gen 91 are minutes, approval of minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2014.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there additions or corrections? Seeing none, proceed, Mr. Clerk.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two, are there additions or deductions?
Did we have any? Attached?
I don't think we do.
I don't have one.
Oh, move approval of the additions and deductions.
Second.
Moving in second, did discussion? Do you have a chance to review?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is motor vehicle tax exemption applications for Catholic Social Services, Emmanuel Retirement Communities, Lynn Quang Buddhist Center, School Sisters of Christ Akim, The Bridge Behavioral Health, and Vital Services.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county board of equalization business, none on the agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone wishes to make public comment for the Board of Equalization on items pertaining to that subject? Seeing none?
As we adjourn. Second.
Then move in the second that we adjourn the Board of Equalization meeting. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.